I'm Lori.
Where's Lori?
Me...I don't know. She's in the saddle, babe.
I don't have a pencil either.
There she is. Good evening. We'll convene this meeting of the Galt City Council. Council's returned from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor. The council's in closed session this evening on public employee discipline dismissal and release. There's no action to report.
Thank you. We'll reconvene to open session and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, here. Councilmember Hewer, here. Councilmember Campion, here.
President.
Councilmember Powers, here. Mayor Cruz, here.
We can all rise for a silent round. We'll buy our last vote. What about you, first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, free,公, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chandler, get the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T, U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, August 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 20th at 2:00 p.m. It is being closed captions and will be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions by council?
No.
Seeing none, we're moving on to presentations. Subjects for Galt Gators.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to call up Monica Lopez, Recreation Supervisor, to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, the presentation is to recognize this year's Galt Gators. As you see, it is also the 30th anniversary of the swim team. This year, the team participated in the Eureka Conference with the Northern California Swim League. We currently have five different conferences that we can compete in, and there are 2016 teams within that league. So, this year, our dual meet records, and those are the Saturday swim meets where we swim against individual teams. So, the swim meets that are underlined are the conference meets that count towards our dual meet season, but all of the swim meets count for swimmers' times in order to swim in championships. And as you'll see, we've won league and non-league conference meets. So, we have our 2016 Eureka Championship Meet, July 23rd and 24th in Woodland. As you can see, we have some of our swimmers here. We're holding our trophies for dual meet and for winning championships. Galt Gators, first place, 1,509 points. Dixon Dolphins, 1,322 and a half. Sunrise, 1,235 and a half. FEC, 893 and a half. And Laguna Creek, 718 and a half. We have our High Point Championships awards. So, these are awarded to top three swimmers for each age group, boys and girls. We had seven, eight boys, third place, Layton Munoz. Nine, ten girls, second place, Brooklyn Beck. Nine, ten boys, first place, Brennan Carr. And third place, Luke Ortega. And then, we had eleven, twelve girls, first place, Katie Schwartz. Eleven, twelve boys, third place, Shay Graham. Thirteen, fourteen boys, first place, Joseph Lopez. Second place, Aaron Hicks. And third place, Gavin Weaver. And Eureka's conference records, our thirteen, fourteen boys made or achieved several conference records. Joseph Lopez, Individual Medley, 50-yard freestyle, 100-yard freestyle. Gavin Weaver, 50-yard breaststroke. And then, Aaron Hicks, Joseph Lopez, Caleb Stewart, and Gavin Weaver won both of the relays, the freestyle relay and the medley relay. And that is our presentation for 2016 Galt Gators.
Impressive.
Can we have the kids in the audience stand up?
Yeah, can we have the kids come up and take a picture?
Absolutely.
And the coaches.
And the coaches.
Yeah, and the coaches. Don't forget the coaches.
We have Ricky Hegner and Andres Ramos are our coaches that are here tonight. And Ricky Hegner is our head coach, and we'll be back next.
Yeah, good job. You guys did a great job.
Yeah, fabulous. We're really proud of you.
Are you guys all watching the Olympics this morning? All right. Good job.
Very good. Awesome job by our Gators. Moving on to public comments.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay. Moving on to the information consent calendar. Do the motion to accept?
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Powers, second by Vice Mayor Payne. Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer? Aye. Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers? Aye. Mayor Cruz?
Aye. All right. Moving on to schedule items. Item number J1, keeping of hen chickens. Mr. Arias.
Good evening. Chris Arias, interim Community Development Director with Community Development Department. The item you have before you is a proposed ordinance allowing the keeping of hen chickens. Currently, the city only allows the keeping of domesticated animals, which are essentially defined as household pets. Non-domesticated animals, including chickens, are not permitted to be kept in the city. The proposed ordinance would allow the keeping of up to four hen chickens, no roosters on a property with a detached, single-family home. Conditions for keeping the chickens include that they must be kept in an enclosure. The enclosure must have setbacks of 10 feet from the rear and side property lines, and the maximum height of the enclosure is eight feet. The enclosures must also be well-maintained and cleaned regularly with feces and feathers removed within 24 hours. Chickens must be provided with adequate living conditions. Feed must be stored to prevent spoilage and infestation, and the slaughtering of chickens is prohibited except in the RA and the OS zones, and that's the open space and residential agriculture. And it should be noted that roosters are allowed in those zones as well. This item was brought to the Planning Commission at its meeting on July 14th, 2016, and they voted two to one to recommend that the city council not adopt the proposed chicken ordinance. Two members were absent. The Planning Commissioners voting against the ordinance were primarily concerned about the city's ability to enforce the ordinance. Ten members of the public spoke at the meeting. Six were in favor, four were opposed. The council has asked tonight to consider introducing the ordinance, which will amend Chapter 6 and 18 of the municipal code, which will essentially allow the keeping of the hen chickens. Chapter 6 is revised to include the language permitting the chickens, and it should also be noted that language is added to prohibit other types of birds, geese, ducks, et cetera, and also that hoofed animals are also prohibited. Chapter 18, Section 18.16.0.0, has also been amended to allow the chickens with the conditions as stated, and the definitions of domestic animal and household pet have been amended to allow the hen chickens. And that concludes staff's presentation. We'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Council, do you have any questions?
Oh, we have a discussion, but I'll wait after we've had a...
I do have numerous speaker sheets here. We'll start off with Levon Rittlesberger.
Good evening, Council. I really hope that you, all of you, have an open mind on the chickens. They're a wonderful pet. They're every bit as good as a cat and a dog. You're allowed four cats and four dogs, and I know people that don't keep up their yards. And chickens, the fertilizer, you go out and spend a lot of money to have a garden to have the fertilizer, where you can't do that with a cat and a dog. So, I certainly hope that you have an open mind, because when we went to the other council, we knew right off, right away, we knew that we were not going to get the vote for it, and especially with two council people out. So, I'm very nervous. I've never spoken for a council before. I've lived, my name is Levon Dowsey-Rittlesberger. I've lived here in Galt for over 70 years. My husband's been here 80 years. We've always had a chicken or two. You have to have two chickens. You can't just have one. You need at least two chickens. And we've always had chickens. And we had this red chicken that it would, we let it out of the cage, we have a big yard, and it would go jump right in my husband's lap. And then, he'd lay it down, and it'd lay right there beside it. It's not any different than our cat and dog. It doesn't cost us any money, just for the food that we feed them. You've got a cat or a dog, you've spent thousands of dollars for vet bills and stuff like that, which you don't with a chicken. And you get eggs from the chicken. They're wonderful eggs, and you can share them with your neighbors. And anyway, I'm really hoping that you guys will grant us the wish that we can have our chickens back. I had no idea that it even went out. I think that, I was told that I'm grandfathered in, so I don't know. I guess, I think 70 years ago, it was put in effect, and I think you guys would have more on that than I would. But I'm not for roosters. I mean, people have roosters, but I went, I brought in three pages. And what I did is I went east, west, north, and south, and I went to Merengue Road to Cost and different people. And where the other council guy told me that he went to 12 people by Greer School, eight said no, and the other one said yes. Well, you don't just go to one spot, you know? So, anyway, I got all yeses. Everybody that I went to said yes for the chickens. And so, I really hope that you guys will think about it and vote in favor.
Levon, do you live in the city limits now?
I do. Yeah.
Do you have neighbors on all sides?
Huh?
Do you have neighbors on all sides?
I have neighbors on the one side now. But the chickens don't make no noise. You know, they're quiet. They don't make any noise to bother anybody, you know? They're really quite nice to have. I mean, they're just every bit as nice as a cat and a dog, and like I say, I have a cat and a dog. So, I just, you know, I hope, you know, I've hatched chickens in my computer room. I have an incubator that rolls, and I have hatched them in there. And my brother lives out in the country, and he always says, "Bring them out to me." And he has all kinds of birds and chickens and stuff, but I want to keep a couple myself. And so, that's why I'm here. So, thank you for listening and hope you're our chickens.
Thank you. Joya Parish.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joya Parish. I lived in Galt for many years. My husband passed away. I moved to Sacramento for 10 years. And this past January, I said, "I'm going home," and I bought a house right here on Oak. And one of the reasons I did that was because a friend of mine mistakenly thought that it was okay to have some chickens, and I've always had chickens. So, I found that wasn't what was happening. I attended the planning meeting, the last one, and what I expressed may not have been properly received because I was comparing. But I lived in Sacramento in an apartment, okay? In Land Park Pocket Area, pretty posh, okay? We can have chickens there. So, I thought, "Well, that's good, right? Elk Grove can have chickens. Lodi can have chickens." And here's Galt, the greatest American little town, who professes on this Historical Society shirt something about being the rural town. And guess what? We can't have chickens. Some of the objections, I understand. The rooster problem, it happens. There's no way to sex a bird when it's this big. It's the responsibility of the person, and yes, not everybody is responsible. But that's the same about cats that run around that are not sterilized, have fought 50,000. Cats, dogs leave messes on people's yards. I know now, because I have a house, and I watch them, and I go right out after them. So, I think what I'm saying to you is, I can't imagine that Galt, I had a business in Galt for many years, right on C Street. I had a flower shop. I missed it. My husband died. I felt like I couldn't stay here. I ran away, okay? I came back, because this is the greatest town. I was thrilled. I fought hard to buy a house on my own. I still work. I'm 77 years old, and I work 40 hours a week because I wanted to live in a house in Galt, okay? So, I asked you last time, oh, not you, but the other council, I heard the argument about the code enforcer. And unfortunately, I have sort of a New York kind of sick sense of humor, and it became something to me symbolic of saying we needed a chicken monitor. We didn't have somebody who could go around and do that. So, we did a little research, and some of the research that we did found that in 15 years, there have been three complaints registered about chickens. Couple of weeks ago, I went to Leroy's to get my car service, and I had to walk back home, leave the car there, and walk home. So, I walked through the alleyway behind where the Marisco places and all that, and guess what? There were pigeon coops everywhere. I said, "Hmm, I wonder if the code enforcer knows about them." I don't want, but there, who is enforcing that? Who's looking at the backyard bunnies? Who's looking at the ducks on people's little ponds here? I know that I've seen, just since I've been back, the remarkable progress that Galt is making. I see open minds. I see things happening here that I wished had happened when I had my flower shop across the street. But the point is, I can't imagine that the fact that Rusty, excuse me, the code enforcer might not be able to get to everybody to look and enforce these things. And I know that people aren't always responsible. But I think most of us would like to share with children, grandchildren, the joy of having a pet, having chickens in the backyard. It's a whole experience. Then they go on to 4H, and maybe they win something. I think it's important for that. I myself believe in having the healthiest foods that you can, so of course, eggs that you buy there, or you buy at a big box store or something, they're sitting in the back sometimes for four and five weeks. We know that. So, that's the other point. And I did prepare a little thing, which I hope you all got, that I sent around, with some of the reasons why. I think we should, you should allow. I think the original number that was mentioned was 10, and I said last time, that was very generous. I don't think that's a necessary number. I think four are good. But, you know, I have a mix that I save, a little dog, and he's Pomeranian and Chihuahua. I know, they bark a lot. So, I don't leave him outside when I'm not with him, so that he disturbs other people. So, Roost is crowing, yeah. Once they come and they wake you up at 4:30, it's a real draft. But that's up to the people to be responsible. And if we're going to stand here and take your time and ask you to please hear us, we would like to have hens. We would like to be responsible citizens. We don't want to sneak them in.
Mrs. Parish?
We'd like to really do.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lois Trapp?
My name is Lois Trapp, and I've been in Galt for about 50 years. I've been a foster parent. I've raised about 37 foster kids and adopted five of them. And I am for chickens in the backyard property where people pay their taxes. I was at the Planning Commission, and there was a lady there that said she had allergies to chickens, so she didn't want chickens around. But I think there's more people allergic to cats, and I love my cats, and I hate to see an ordinance go against cats that are outside, just because people are allergic to them. Something was brought up about vermin, vernor, how do you say that word? Vermin, rats, my, well, I feed my cats outside, and I have other cats come over. I have a couple of blue jays that like cat food. I have a pesky little squirrel that comes around. And the other night, when I went out, there was a possum there. And yes, he played dead. I was hitting him out the side gate with a broom. And I called the code enforcer because they were concerned that there would be too much work for him. Rusty said he'd been on the job for 15 years and had had very few calls on chickens, and the ones he did have was roosters. My husband and his brother could not have a pet dog or cat when they were younger. They each had a pet. And he said the chicken would come when you called its name, and they pet it just like I would pet my cats. And if you've ever eaten a really fresh egg, you will notice that the yolk is a different color than what you buy in the store. It's kind of an orangey color. And when you go to a restaurant for breakfast, you don't order eggs, because they don't measure up to what you have in your backyard. Chickens are good for eggs, they're good for pets, and they're good for the environment. They eat up the bugs. So, I would like to encourage, beg the council to allow Galt citizens to have some chickens. And chickens are flock animals. They need at least two. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, a concerned chicken person tonight. I feel like a fox in a hen house. But the hens are pretty cute, okay? People have asked me, "Well, aren't you going to say anything?" And this is before the Planning Commission, I went to that, and they didn't pass it. And, you know, when you live in Galt, you've got to go with people that were elected, and they make their decisions based on a lot of facts, whether there's three of them or five of them. And on the council, you're elected also, and you have to make some very hard decisions and some very easy decisions. This one here, it's almost a gimme, but it will cost more to raise these wonderful chickens than have the eggs to eat than it would be to buy them. But of course, they're a little bit better quality when you raise them, and you know what you're feeding them. So, that's pretty good. I don't know if anybody on the council knows how many eggs four chickens would produce a day. If you don't know, I'm going to tell you. But as the amount of chickens go up, the eggs will go up. So, four hens should give you, on an average, up and down a little bit, about three eggs a day. You got it? Four hens, three eggs. The feed and everything else does cost a little more overtime to keep these. And a lot of the people that have chickens right now have already got a coop. The challenge is, is 10 feet away from the fence or your property line on the sides. Will they be required to move it 10 feet away? Of course, there's nothing in the front yard, but in the backyard, 10 feet away. Now, who enforces that? Who sees to it? They've had it for a few years now. Has that violated anything? Maybe not. Maybe yes, eight feet tall. Also, what about the people that have pigeons? I have people around where I live that have pigeons. Nobody has said a word about those beautiful birds that are trained to fly off and come back to you, land on your fingers sometimes, and they become pets, just like the chickens do. I don't know if they have a pecking order, but pigeons are a lot messier than chick, I mean pigeons, yeah, are a lot messier than chickens in many cases. The chickens, I have no qualms. If you want to have four chickens, that's fine. If you want to have three, four eggs a day, that's fine. If you start selling them, that's another story. Then you become a retailer, and that would have to be enforced also. You'll have to have the license. What's going to happen, I think, because all this came up and it's hit the news, and people are being concerned about it and talking about it and everything, that Rusty might be a little bit busier in the beginning than he has been in the past, because people are going to want to make the ones that don't want the chickens. They're probably going to say, "Well, you better check them out and see if they're up to code." Things are going to happen, I think. I have nothing against a chicken that would jump in my lap. I was raised with chickens in a residential area, had about 30 of them, and I had to take the eggs and go down to Western Union in Oakland and deliver them, because we didn't have a lot of money. And I learned how to take care of my first chicken on how to get rid of one. And over the period of time, you have to. The roosters, by the way, I'm sure Rusty knows how to tell a rooster from a hen, but, you know, well, maybe not. But then again, when they're chicks, you can't really tell. It's hard. So, if you go out and buy three, or four, or five chicks, you don't know if you're going to get a rooster for sure. And so, once they grow up, you've got to know that you've got a rooster there, and you better get rid of it. And the quick way to do it is to look at their tails. There's other points, but the tails usually tell the story. So, if you see Rusty out there picking up a chicken and looking at the rear end with the tail, you'll know what he's doing. But nevertheless, the chickens are fun, and they're trainable, and they have a great pecking order. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ralph Cortez?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Ralph Cortez, resident here in the city of Galt. I first off want to say that from the very beginning, when Ms. Crandall brought this up, followed the process, and I certainly respect all of the folks coming out and voicing their concerns and bringing it to everybody's attention. At the Planning Commission, I also spoke, and I was against it for a couple of different reasons, mostly because I do believe that there are a tremendous amount of individuals who can raise them and know about chickens. But I think if there are, would be, if there are those... Um, but I think if there are, would be, uh, if there are those that attempt to try it and might not quite know how to do it, um, just like with, with pets, uh, cats, dogs, um, they lose interest, uh, the children lose interest, um, now the parents are having to figure out what they're gonna do with these chickens, um, and then they become unwanted, and who knows where they'll wind up, just like, uh, cats and dogs. And certainly, uh, don't wanna add to the, uh, pet overpopulation that we already have. It's out of control. So, um, I still feel that I don't believe they belong in the city limits. Um, one of the things that I don't think anybody really brought up, I understand, I heard all the pros, uh, the, the comments from, um, long-term residents, but one of them is, um, that I came to grasp was, uh, the disease that those-
(coughs)
-and primarily the salmonella. Um, hopefully, I'll be able to get this out. Um, chickens may transmit these diseases to people. The most common is salmonella infection. The bacteria may linger in chicken feces and bodies as chickens constantly come in contact with their droppings. Salmonella can infect, salmonella infection can lead to diarrhea, fever, stomach pain, nausea, vomiting, and headaches within six to seventy-two hours of contact. And it may last for two to seven days, according to the Center for Disease Controls and Prevention. Most people recover without treatment, but the infection may be fatal to children under five and elderly and people with weakened immune systems, according to Food and Drug Administration. An increasing number of people around the country are choosing to keep live poultry, such as chickens or ducks, as part of a greener, healthier lifestyle while you enjoy the benefits of the backyard chicks and chickens and other poultry. It is important to consider the risk of illness, especially for children, which can result from handling live poultry or anything in the area where they live and roam. Co- it's common for chickens, ducks, and other poultry to carry salmonella. Salmonella is a type of germ that naturally lives in the intestines of poultry and many other animals. Even organically fed poultry can have salmonella. While it usually doesn't make the bird sick, salmonella can cause serious illness when it passes to people. Live poultry may have salmonella germs in their droppings and on their bodies, feathers, feet, and beaks, even when they appear healthy and clean. The germ can also get on cages, coops, feed, and water dishes, hay, plants, and soil in the area where the birds live and roam. Additionally, the germ can be found on hands, shoes, and clothing of these who handle the birds or work with, work or play where they live and roam. Uh, I don't think backyard chickens are for everyone, just like I don't think dogs or cats are for everyone. Many people get animals thinking they're cute, or fun, or whatever, and, uh, then realize they are a lot of work. That is, that is how so many animals end up abandoned or mistreated. Just, uh, just a, a fact that I believe resides, uh, in the decision. Again, uh, nothing against. I have a lot of respect for those, uh, that are for, um, but that's, this is, this is, uh, this is how we get laws passed and, and, uh, how citizens come to their council, and I encourage it, and I hope, uh, more people do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all I have for speaker sheets. At this time, I'll entertain the motion, and then we'll go to discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Well, according to rules-
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion by council member here and a second by, by Mayor Pence. Yes, ma'am.
As far as enforcement, uh, Ms. Horace, how is this going to be enforced? I mean, we have at least five or six different regulations, one relating to the size of the coop, the area and distance of the coop from side and rear property lines, uh, sanitary factors, uh, health and safety conditions of the chickens themselves, and maintenance of their living quarters. How is that gonna be inspected to ensure compliance with this ordinance?
Uh, it's a good question. Uh, you know, many of our, uh, code enforcement action is re- is basically enforced by citizen complaint, because a lot of items are in people's yards, and, you know, the city isn't in the habit of going and just looking in what people are doing in their backyard. So if there was a complaint by a neighbor on a potential, uh, chicken coop, I would imagine the code enforcement officer would then investigate, uh, the situation and try to apply, you know, some of the, some standards to, uh, what is happening. So looking at, uh, the, the conditions, evaluating them to see if those are then met.
But, but how could he even get access to the property? It has to be visi- visible from a public way. So how would he even have access to the property to do the inspection? Assuming the property owner says, no, I don't want you to inspect.
So if we had a situation where we had a complaint, and, um, and we don't have the property owner giving us access, we can always go and get a, a warrant to inspect the property.
An inspection warrant?
Yeah.
And what's the process to do that?
Well, you'd have to, you have to put together declarations, and you have to go get a judge to issue the inspection warrant.
Is that something you would have to do?
Yes.
And how much time and effort is involved in something like that? I mean, would, would Rusty or the code enforcement officers, time be involved in the preparation of, I suspect, some form of a report and/or suit? I, I mean, I'm not sure.
It's not really, it's not actually a lawsuit. It definitely would involve his time and effort in collecting information in advance of going, uh, going down to the court, prepare the, uh, the declaration, and then it'd be a, uh, an effort by both of us to go down and get the judge to give us authorization to go into the property to do an inspection. Um, you know, one of the other, one of the other approaches that we looked at when we were putting together this ordinance is there are some cities that actually require a permit to keep chickens, and as part of the permit process, you can have the, uh, the permit holder grant you access to come on to the property on a regular basis to, uh, do this. And we elected not to make this a, a permit process, um, for a variety of reasons. First of all, it's a little easier, uh, to the residents not to require a permit. It's a little less administrative burden. And our thought was that if the city council actually adopted this ordinance, and then it turned out that, um, we ended up with a more significant problem than we anticipate, we could always come back and recommend a permit process at that point in time. But, um, if the concern of the council is property access, we certainly, one option is to redraft the ordinance to require a permit where the permitee would have to give the city authorization to access the property for inspections.
But then that raises the whole issue of inspection costs placed on the property owner, and I'm certain that that's a cost that's, they wouldn't want to engage in, um, for raising three or four chickens.
Right. And, and we try, and frankly, if we're gonna do a permit process, or we do have the inspections, we try to recover that cost through the, uh, the amount of the permit.
But, so under the current ordinance, the way it's written, uh, you would have to have an inspection warrant to get on the property to do the inspection.
Assuming that the property owner did not give us-
Give us, give a permission.
Yeah.
Um, we've never, if we ever used the inspection warrant for this type of activity, I think we've used it with, in connection with the police department in the past, but I don't know, have we ever used the inspection warrant process here?
Um, the, uh, well, the, we used an inspection warrant for the, uh, the Royal Delta Inn.
Okay.
Um, but except for that particular cir- circumstance, we haven't had to, uh, to go get an inspection warrant in the last several years for, um, single-family issues.
The, the, um, and, and I'm glad somebody else brought it up that there are, there's, there's pigeons in this town. And obviously, there are people that live in town that have chickens. Um, I, I, my concern is, is that, given these regulations, um, I find it would almost be impossible on many, on many, if not, say, almost a majority of the lots in this community, to where you could even place a chicken coop. And if they're to be inside of an enclosed area, I don't see how you could possibly meet the setback requirements of ten feet off the side and ten feet off the rear, when, when sometimes you maybe only have a ten-foot rear yard setback from your house, which means that coop is gonna be sitting, well, it wouldn't even fit.
In your back, in your backyard.
We'll be right after slider.
Living room, yeah.
Yeah, essentially-
Underneath your deck.
You know, if you look at the standard lot, you know, sixty-five by a hundred, uh, you got a sixty-five, hundred square foot lot, twenty-foot front setback, you know, thirty, forty-foot, uh, house, ten-foot rear setback, you are placing, uh, essentially that chicken coop in the middle of the backyard.
Right.
And assuming, you know, there's no other items in the backyard, you know, it can work, uh, but-
If you want it in your pool, or on the middle of your lawn, or, or something like that, I mean, that's, that's, that's my concern, is that I don't think that, that, and I, I think there should be a setback, because obviously, it has the possibility to impact your neighbors', the neighboring properties.
Well, yeah, and the intent of that was to not have them tucked up against the fence, and the fence used as part of the enclosure.
Right. And, and I, but my fear is, that's probably what would happen. Um, and, uh, I, 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 having been in code enforcement and having dealt with chickens in this city in the past, um, I, I believe that, you know, there are people that are out there doing it. Um, and unless their neighbors haul on them, code enforcement has enough to do without chasing chickens or pigeons. Um, I just don't think, I think this has the potential to exacerbate a problem that isn't really a problem today. And not to say that it's ignored, but I think that, um, by permitting, well, it's unlimited. I mean, basically, anybody can come in and, you know, apply for four chickens, and, um, I agree with what Mr., uh, uh, Cortez said, that, you know, you know, I think people may lose interest. Uh, there are the abandonment issues, uh, aside from the health and safety issues. I mean, I, I, those are, I think, lesser concerns, but I'm more concerned about, you know, people losing interest in it, you know? Maybe this sounds good this week, and you end up with three or four chickens, and then kids don't wanna maintain it, and it's their responsibility, and, um, I, 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 I have a real concern, uh, by just allowing it outright. The, the other thing is, is that, you're right, Galt is, uh, in a rural area, but it is an urban, it's an urban community. Um, there are chicken ranches around Galt, and if the real issue here is to, you know, have, uh, more of an organic, uh, food supply, that's certainly available.
Council member here.
What is the setback when people put storage sheds in, in their backyards?
Uh, it depends on the size of the storage shed, but if it's, uh, if it's a hundred and twenty square feet or above, it basically adopts the setbacks of the home, which is ten feet from the rear and five feet from the side. If it's under, you're looking at five and five.
So we're looking at more stringent-
Correct.
-setbacks for this than we do these huge storage units that are in people's backyards?
Correct.
But the storage- I don't- Sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were sorry. I, I don't share, um, Councilwoman Campion's concerns. I raised chickens in our urban backyard citrus sites as a child. Um, like I said, I, I have a lot more problems sometimes with the doves and the pigeons in town than how noisy they are in the mornings. Chickens are a lot less noisy than, than we have with the birds in town. But, um, but that said, people enjoy it, and I'm okay with it. Um, I still think it's just those people being responsible about their dogs and cats. If you're gonna have chickens, you have to be responsible. To tell people that they can't have something because we think you might not be able to take care of it, that's like telling people you can't have cats or you can't have dogs because you might not take care of them. We all know there's horrible cases out every single day of cats and dogs abandoned on our streets, um, and being, being, having to be picked up, being hit by cars, all sorts of things because somebody got tired of their animal. Um, if you go to Fair Oaks, Gold Town Fair Oaks, there are chickens all over the street. They, they love their chickens. They actually take care of them. Um, they're like a public thing. Um, so I'm actually very much, um, I hear the concerns about people, but I also think that I walked around, uh, there's, over by my daughter's, out for a walk today, very obviously, someone has a chicken coop. And as long as they're not roosters, I mean, they're noisy, even though where I live, we even hear the roosters, because we live near the edge of town. So, um, I don't see that there's an issue, and I think people should be able to do things on their property and be able to take care of their property.
I, I would just agree that, um, I think people have a lot of restriction, restrictions on their property, and I like to not increase that. Uh, I think that the whole issue of chickens, if you look at the history so far, hasn't been a problem. I can't see the city spending tons of money on, uh, inspection warrants or anything else. Um, you know, frankly, I would like to, uh, know where my food comes from, and a lot of people feel that way today for a lot of different reasons. And if you're wanting to, um, you know, seriously look at what, what's going into your body or your children's bodies, then I think you should have the opportunity to do so.
Council member power, Cortez.
Well, I'm on the total other end of the spectrum. Um, first of all, I've got random notes here, so they're gonna be kinda scattered. Uh, what you brought up, up about the storage units is they're totally enclosed, and we don't put animals in them, so, um, I really think, I've had, I've had chickens before also. I've lived out in the country, and we've had a big hen house where we let the chickens out all day, and they could go in and out and, um, you know, lay their eggs as they want, and then at night, we put them into roosts. Um, my personal opinion is chickens are free-roaming animals, and to put them in those kinda cages in your backyard is animal cruelty. I'm sorry, to me, it is. They're just, they're not meant to be in a cage, like, nothing is meant to be in a cage, in my opinion. Um, and I agree with Councilmember Campion on a lot of things. The setbacks are gonna be good for some people, and it's great if you don't have a neighbor in the back, or you don't have a neighbor on your side, or you're almost in the country, but you're not really. But for basic houses, uh, chickens, uh, with the setbacks, they're ten feet, to me, is not even enough. Um, saying that chickens don't make noise, apparently, most people have never heard of chickens clucking and clucking and clucking, and apparently never heard of them laying an egg, because when they lay an egg, you can hear it all over town. I mean, they're, they're, they make a lot of noise. So chickens are not quiet. And I think, um, you know, along with, uh, some of the things that were said, I think it's great that you wanna teach your child how to raise chickens, but, you know, we've got a lot of farms outside, and they do that for a living, and you can go out there and show them, uh, in your rural area, 'cause we're a town, how to, um, how cows are raised, how chickens are raised, and all of that. Um, the salmonella thing bothers me too, because people always say, oh, you get a nice warm egg, and you take it in, and you crack it, well, no, you're really supposed to, there should be some thing there that says you need to clean them before you take them into your house. So that's something that needs to be, uh, addressed too. Um, I, I just think that this is an ordinance that we're not gonna even be, we're writing an ordinance that we can't enforce. So to me, right off of that, you know, if, if somebody has a chicken and the neighbors are complaining, and we have to go through the court system to get one neighbor to not be upset with the other neighbor, that's not fair to the neighbor that doesn't have a chicken. I'm sorry. If we're gonna be treating everybody as equal, there better be some way we can enforce this when people don't want chickens on one side or the other for one reason or another, you know? And I know what a mess chickens make. They poop, and then after about a couple of days, it turns dry, and if you try to clean it up, it goes up into the air, and if there's people with allergies and stuff, they're gonna be sucking that up. So I think that we just need to come to some agreement that's fair to everybody, because there are people that want them, and there are people that don't, that don't want them. But if the ones that don't want them are being harassed by the ones that want them, and there's no way we can enforce it, as I've seen before with dogs and cats, I don't think we need to add to it, and I really don't think that should be Rusty's job. So that's my opinion on the whole thing.
Well, this was brought before us early on. Um, one of the things that the, uh, the member of the community that brought it forward was, she'd gone out and done a lot of research regarding Sacramento and Elk Grove and Lodi and their complaints regarding the chickens, and their work minimal to none. And they have all, and Elk Grove, and they have all allowed chickens for many, many years. So I think we're making a big deal out of, out of what could happen instead of what, instead of allowing people to, you know, um, know where their food comes from. And the whole issue about the salmonella, I can tell you, you have a more of a chance with the, which what you buy in the grocery store, of getting salmonella, um, chicken in your grocery store, um, than you do about, if you're being responsible- than you do about, if you're being responsible, and making the choices that you make on what you, how you raise your food. Just as people raising, you know, planting vegetable gardens, you can get sick from vegetable gardens, too. It's about how you do it, and how you take care of it, and it comes down to that with the chickens, too. So I think part of that's just personal responsibility. I just can't continue to, to say, "Well, we think Rusty might be overworked." Well, as I said, larger communities than us have no complaints, and are not having issues, I can't think that our little town's going to have issues that nobody, that much larger communities, and much more urban communities have. And, you know, I really appreciated the work that was done when this was brought to us, because I also looked into it, and read, and went on the internet, and read some things about it, and absolutely, the information you gave us was correct.
Okay, then I'll just go with my animal cruelty thing. I just think they're free roaming animals, and they shouldn't be in cages. That's just my, my head.
Well, and on this one, you mentioned the, the number of chickens, and needing the inspection warrants. I haven't seen one inspection warrant even thought of with those who are raising more than four or five cats, or four or five dogs, and I've seen plenty of complaints about that. At least one member of this, of this group has had a situation of that nature, so...
Can I interject right there? Because we know what you're talking about, that was me. The, the problem is, there is no way to enforce any of that.
That was the whole point.
And, and, and there could be like fifteen chickens in somebody's backyard, and there's no way to enforce it. No, I know that from dogs. You know, so, right, you're, you're totally right, there's no way we can tell, somebody might say, "Oh, well, maybe I need six eggs a day."
Well, going back to what I was leading to, it leads down to, and falls, falls into the place of responsibility, as Councilmember Hewer said. These people are raising this for food, and for education for the children, okay? Dogs and cats are pets, okay? You want to go to the far end of that expect, of that spectrum, look at the, the trailer park down over off of, was it, West Stockton Boulevard? Many of us remember when that place was surrounded with rabbits, and they were domesticated rabbits that people discarded after Easter, okay? Boils right down to a responsibility issue. Okay? These people are being responsible. For the most part, I have to believe the people in this community are responsible. We're talking about the chicken farms, Kurt. I'm sorry, most of those chicken farms, they feed their animals antibiotics or gorthorn hormones. I don't want to eat it, and I know, most of the people out here don't want to eat it. So I, I have to side with allowing it to happen.
I buy organic eggs.
Well, I, 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 again, I, I see this, I see it as an unenforceable ordinance, and just another layer of government that we don't need.
Can I call for the vote?
Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Just a minute, just a second. Go ahead.
I think there was a motion and a second on the floor, and just as a clarification, motion is to introduce the ordinance in Chapter Six and Eighteen, regarding the keeping of hen chickens, waive the full reading of the ordinance, and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption.
That is correct. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. This is three two.
I just want to make one more comment. I think one of the things that Councilwoman Hewer mentioned, that I want to emphasize the work that this person did in bringing this forward, she was very diligent, and did her homework, and I think that, that's important, that we recognize that, and encourage others to do, do the same, whenever they bring an issue before the council, or anything else. So thank you.
Yeah, there was more than one person that did a lot of homework on both sides, so I think we ought to recognize all of them.
All right, moving on to City Council Office, discretionary funds for Council, uh, Vice Mayor Payne?
Are we there already?
We are.
Okay, well, I want to ask the council to approve my, not my, the taxpayers' money that we are, we have as discretionary money, a thousand dollars towards the community garden. And I have a breakdown on how I would like to spend it. At least I think I do. Yeah, here it is. If you want to pass it around for me, I'd appreciate it. Put them down there. So, right now, I have one application that has already been paid for, and I have at least three others that are waiting for garden plots, and I've sent an email to all the current gardeners, and they don't want to give up theirs. So here's what I'm requesting, that I use the taxpayers' discretionary money, for four more beds. Three hundred and two dollars is for the soil, the lumber, it's three hundred dollars, and I got that from Home Depot. I'm expecting to have volunteers build the beds, which will be of no cost. We need some hoses, the ones we have have been donated, they've been attached with duct tape, and we're kind of wasting water that way, so I'd like to have some, four hoses. And we need to have a dumpster to clean up our pile where we've thrown away old plants and pulled weeds, and I got a, a number from Cal Waste of two hundred and eighty dollars. The grand total is eleven hundred and two dollars, and I'm hoping I can cut corners and do what I want to do with a thousand dollars, if that's approved.
Have you talked to Cal Waste about donating the dumpster?
You know, they're already donating two yard waste bins that we can use in the future, but this is accumulating in just making it a garden.
How many, how many families, or how many participants do we have out there?
We have thirteen gardens already.
So thirteen individuals?
Uh, we have some people that have more than one.
More than one what?
Garden. We have two.
Raised beds.
Yeah, raised beds.
Is the garden becoming self-sustaining, I mean, are we working towards this becoming a self-sustaining enterprise?
Yeah, I would think so.
I mean, the other community garden in town, people pay fees, and, and are part of it, and, so are we doing that? I mean, so that this becomes self-sustaining as a community garden, and not having, you know, really, the entire community pay for something that's benefiting a, a small group of people?
Actually, it's benefiting quite a large group of people. For example, we have the Head Start School, uh, school students that come there, and they have their own garden. It's also creating a better neighborhood for the whole area. We just recently had a barbecue there on Saturday, and people from the whole neighborhood came, some had gardens, some didn't. But it was a chance to take a neighborhood that needs some community building, and give it a place to happen. We ate food together, and what they say about breaking bread together, I think, is true. We do get to know each other better. But as far as sustaining it, we have room for the beds, and once they're built, and the dirt's in them, then it is up to the people to maintain them. They are paying for the water at this time. I do have to admit that we've had donations of fruit trees, and we have a pumpkin patch, and we just had a corn patch, that was not an individual's, it was for the whole community.
I'm absolut, I mean, Barbara, I absolutely agree, I'm absolutely in favor of the community garden. I just want to know that it's moving toward being self-sustaining, because we can't continue to, as a city, supplement, supplement it as a, as a project. I mean, it's just that, at some point, we need to, you know, I hope that in X number of years, and I don't know what that'll be, that it will be self-sustaining.
Well, and you know, it's, it's, we've got a pretty good record of, of that happening. Up until now, all of the materials have been donated either by Home Depot, or Elliot Homes, or different people throughout. I have a hard time continuing to ask them to provide this, and I would mention that one of the reasons we have it is because it was an important part of the grant that we got.
Absolutely.
So, I think that if, it is worth any investment that we do put in, I think the dollars that, that you see spent here is going to come back in a lot of different ways. So I do hope there'll be self-sustaining after your question.
No, no, I mean, I'm, I, I absolutely have no problem with your request, I'm just saying that, I just think that there needs to be, I, I hope there's a plan, that, so that it does, because it's always going to need maintenance, it's always going to need new hoses, it's always going, there's always going to be a need, and at some point, it needs to be able to sustain itself, if it's really going to go on into the future, right? I mean, we just can't think that it's going to be another parkland where we end up, you know?
Actually, what's been happening is the people have been sustaining it for us. The hoses, as I mentioned, were donated out of someone's backyard, yes, they weren't great, but they, they were adequate for the time. So I'm saying, the city's getting a pretty darn good deal.
Well, it's not necessarily for the city, I mean, it, it is the city's property, but the community is the one that should be maintaining it, is my, my concern, I share the same concerns as Councilmember before.
Okay, let me continue then. We have had groups from real life church, the Mormon church, scouts, all out there helping to maintain it, pulling weeds, planting things, so the community is putting a lot into it.
And a lot goes back to the community by ways of supporting senior groups, and the schools, and...
We have many seniors that live in apartments. I had one lady say, "Thank you, thank you for saving my life." I don't know how much she meant that, but she, she seemed pretty sincere.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move, if that's possible.
Motion by Vice Mayor Payne, I have a second.
I second.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. That's unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to number two, discretionary funds, Cruz. Just asking for the approval of the allocation of my thousand dollars towards the banner program for the city, and in the spirit of what Councilmember Hewer said, we're actually getting to the point where it is going to be self-sufficient. Hopefully, the money's here will be used primarily for the raising of the banners, but the remaining portion of it will be taken care of by the parents or family members requesting the banners.
Now, just, the, the, the people that go up on there, the kids, and are they ones that are serving overseas? I forgot the rule for that, or is it...
Those have actually been broadened a bit, and since we are now opening up to the public in general, if they're serving, they have the opportunity of going up there.
Okay.
It was restricted overseas, is that it?
It was serving in the line of duty, and that was only because it was restricted to a thousand dollars, and it was kind of tight with the money. So those who are in harm's way were the ones up there, so...
But now the...
Now we're opening it up a bit. It's going to be really tight, considering we're limited to the number of poles we have up there, so...
That's the only area that they are placed in town?
At this time. The only other areas we have with those, those type of setups are, are available are down on Lincoln, the, the area from, I think it's F Street, or E Street, all the way down past the high school, but those are currently set up for, for the community as far as current events, things of that nature. I think the latest thing we have up there is Shop Local.
I think they're down now, I think most of those are, are carried very...
Those have been there for a long time, have we had new ones up there? Because the ones that have been up there before were one of the, that had each business on it?
Character traits.
Yeah, character traits.
Oh.
Had character traits, but they were sponsored by a different business.
Oh, okay, I see.
Anyway, that's where I'm going with it, and that's what I'm asking for. Calling for a motion, or any discussion?
I want to have a discussion first, I just want to tell you, it's a great thing that you've been doing for our men and women that are serving our country. I think that's the least we can do, and I'm pleased that it continues to go, and it's a worthy cause.
I agree with you, and thank you.
Okay, so I move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Powers, and second by Vice Mayor Payne. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
It's a little past five oh. Moving on to City Manager's Office, Special Events Ordinance, Mr. Palazzo.
Members of the council, good evening. We've had several discussions in the past on special events, we've had some, to our strategic plan process, some direction by staff to track our special events, and, and city-sponsored events, and, you know, the costs and the benefits to the city, and staff is doing that. As, you know, we moved through our season, we started to receive applications from other organizations in our community, asking for special event permits, and, you know, some, you know, assistance from the city, you know, in providing, you know, possibly, you know, police assistance, you know, with these special events, and we have, you know, an event on our calendar this evening after this item. So I thought it would be a good idea to come, you know, to the City Council, and, you know, just kind of refresh our, our, on, you know, our ordinance that we have in place for special events, kind of go through it, and staff has, you know, recently, we looked at this, and I have some recommendations with this ordinance, and just kind of want to walk the council and the community, you know, through this ordinance a little bit. The ordinance was put in place, you know, in two thousand and five, and it walks through, you know, the application process, what staff is looking for on information when, you know, organizations submit applications for the special events. It goes through our Parks and Recreation Department, our Parks and Recreation Director has authority to review, put conditions upon the special events, and then also, you know, work with, you know, the police, fire department, emergency services, if there are costs that they're going to incur with providing some services while these events go on, provide information to the organization on, on that cost. The applicant has the ability to appeal that to the City Council if they don't, you know, want to pay that fee, you know, basically ask for a waiver of the cost, or they want to appeal some of those conditions that may be put on that event application. In addition, this applicant, or the special event ordinance, at the time it was written, required the city to go back through, and, you know, take a look at the public service fees, and adopt some fees, you know, for, you know, city costs through a resolution, and I don't think that was ever done, we haven't found, you know, information, you know, to that. So tonight, you know, the whole intent of having this is given the opportunity to have a discussion, I'm looking for some direction, you know, from the council. I don't believe the ordinance is, you know, well-written, complicated, confusing, the organization of the ordinance, it's hard to get through. I, I think, you know, given some opportunity, staff would like to take this ordinance and can rework it a little bit, to, you know, make it a little bit more understandable, understanding for the city and the community, and also, you put together that fee schedule, and, and take a look at, you know, what the true costs are, maybe have a standard schedule of fees, you know, for the different events. With that, just open up a discussion to the council, entertain questions.
Do you have anything in particular that you're referring to, as, as it being hard to understand, or unclear?
Well, you know, I'm just, in, in general, going through the ordinance, I actually had to read through it about three times, to understand, you know, class one, class two, class three, type of events, trying to, you know, put the, you know, the different pieces together. I read a lot of ordinances, I work with them, if it's confusing to me, I know it's going to be confusing to any, you know, member of the public, you know, that, you know, may want to say, "Hey, I want to do a special event," and we hand this ordinance to them, and I, I, I think it could be better written.
So Armando, have you had a lot of questions from people regarding this ordinance?
Over the last couple of, probably the last four or five months, there's been a lot of discussion stemming from council's request for us to review the costs associated with these events, so that's where it's stemming from.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, we don't enforce a lot of this, correct?
I would say the, the fee part has not been enforced.
Are all the insurance liabilities being enforced?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Special events concern me, because we don't budget for them, it's not in our budget, so every time we get hit with a special event... So, every time we get hit with a special event, and they ask for the city to either partner or waive the fee, we're asking the, we're asking the general public to do that, right? We're asking the taxpayers to do it, because, and so it's like an unbudgeted item that sometimes we never know, I mean, the next item on the agenda. We just never know when these things are going to come up, and I mean, I think we need to look at this ordinance and come up with what is going to be our policy regarding the cost of services, because I don't, there is, yes, I understand there is a benefit to having events in our community, but there's different kinds of events. There's events that are not fundraisers, and then there's events that are primarily fundraisers, but everybody believes that the city's the deep pocket, that the taxpayers, and I just have a real problem that we continue to come back to the taxpayers as we ask our residents to pay higher water fees and higher sewage fees and higher building fees and everything else that we're asking people to do, but at the same time, we continue to want to hand out what everybody refers to as the little amounts of money, but those little amounts of money in our budget add up over time, and I just think that at some point we need to, that we need to stop, and we need to say, we can't defer other services and not provide the services to the community that we are required to provide and that the community are paying for, because we, and ask our employees to give up so that we continue to feel good about providing money to, to special events. And it's not to say that every event is not a worthwhile event. Events are good, but maybe we need to know upfront that there's a cost entailed in that, and they need to put into their fee structure or into their budget how they're going to pay for those things, and not keep coming and asking the citizens, in large the entire community, to be the funding base. And so, I really think that, I would really like to see it brought back to us and looking at, starting to enforce all of it, and really looking at what do we want to budget and what is realistic for us to, because generally, it's a lot of road closures and law enforcement and porta-potties, and, I mean, just, you know, and then there's, you know, some of them, they're selling alcoholic beverages, and you know, they're making a lot of money, and they could afford to pay the rental fee on the, on the community center that needs a lot of upgrades, it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money to maintain these buildings, but we waive fees and waive fees and waive fees for people that are doing fundraisers. It's one thing if it's an event that's not a fundraiser and it benefits the community at large, it's another thing when it's fundraisers to benefit organizations, so. I've said all along, I, I continue to really struggle with this whole issue about maintaining a budget and building our reserves, and we've come through a horrible recession, and we still need to rebuild our reserves. We still have reserves that, yes, it's adequate to meet our needs, yes, it's, it meets the law, but if we go into another recession in five or 10 years, we're going to have trouble if we haven't rebuilt that reserve.
I do have one question, though. As far as affecting increase in utility bills or anything like that, this would not, waiving the fees would not affect?
I don't follow the question.
Okay.
I think it's more perception is what, Councilmember...
Okay, I'm just saying.
I'm not saying, yeah, water fees have nothing to do with, but at the same time, raising rates at Parks and Rec, raising rates to pay for buildings to be remodeled, I mean, and it's all asking taxpayers to continue to fund things.
I just didn't want people to get the idea that they're going to be paying more for their water bill or anything because of the events that fees have been waived on.
Well, and I, I think there are different events, and I think we need to look at, as Councilmember Huer says, two event events. I mean, we've got some that the city sponsors, that's for the whole city, and I'm definitely for doing those for the whole city. It's, I think that there's, in the scope of this, you're probably going to have different kinds of events listed, correct? Right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, part of what Councilmember Huer was saying, you know, we have an ordinance in place, and it's my job to, you know, follow, follow the ordinances and implement them, and part of that process, you know, we have a process that's written into this ordinance, an application process for people that want to put on events, and, you know, the ordinance, you know, states that the city recover our costs, you know, for services that, you know, possibly the police, you know, may be out there doing road closures, it says, you know, we need to, you know, recover those costs. If the applicant wants a waiver of that cost, then they need to come to the council for that, and that's what's written in the ordinance. Yet tonight, and the ordinance is confusing, and that's why I'm asking, you know, this evening, you know, to, you know, have staff, you know, go back and take a look and see if we can, you know, take this ordinance, make it less confusing, and then also get policy direction from the council on, is there other things that, you know, we want to see in our special events ordinances that may not be in here, you know, things that are in here that maybe need to be taken out, you know, how is it that you want, you know, our event ordinance to, to look?
I, I agree. I think the, the ordinance is very cumbersome. I don't know that it needs to be 11 pages of legalese. I, I think it could be, you know, softened quite a bit, but at the same time, I, a lot of my concerns, Councilmember Huer has echoed, I, I think that we need to look up or develop a program where we've got some consistency in this ordinance's application, and that's the problem. There is, it's been completely and inconsistently applied over the years. So, I, I think it's important that we come up with something that is a little bit easier to understand, not only to staff, but most importantly, is the public. They're the ones that are going to have to take a look at this and see, okay, these are the rules and regs I have to abide by, and these are the expectations. I also think we need to develop a fee schedule and identify those types of events that were, where maybe the city is involved, where we may consider a waiver or, or in fact waive it or sponsor it. So, I think that that's real important for the public in general.
Maybe there should be like an appeal in here if...
And I'm cer, I'm certain that that would be one of the processes that would be involved in it. The problem in the past has been that anytime anything's appealed, it appears as though it's an automatic approval.
Right. Would, I mean, would the council entertain the idea of maybe doing a little subcommittee, maybe a couple of members of Parks and Rec and a couple of members of the council to look at the special events ordinance and come back with a recommendation to us? I mean, I'm just, I mean, city staff, of course, they're going to play a very large part in that, because our attorney always does, but I just think that, you know, maybe this is something we need to get some community input on.
I agree, and I was just going to ask you, do you have an idea how much staff time would be involved?
In preparing the ordinance? You know, it depends on what level of staff is...
How many pages it is?
Well, if staff, you know, we take it back.
Well, they're going to review it.
You know, Parks and Rec Director, city attorney, you know, myself, you know, the departments, you know, the police department, you know, team development, we work together. You know, if we, we start creating committees, and we have committee time, you know, that, you know, adds more time to get that public input. It's always good to get the public input.
I think when it comes to special events, giving public input would be very beneficial.
This, this has been, you know, a topic of discussion for, you know, since I've been here, you know, six, last six months, and I think before that, so, I think a committee and spending the time to get this right, and, you know, something that's understandable to the community is, is very important, so, you know, spending that staff time to do that and the, the community outreach is, would be important to do.
Yeah, I agree.
I think as an alternative to a committee, I mean, certainly, we're going to have public input because it's going to come back to council, and at that ti, and at that point, we decide maybe it needs additional analysis, we could. I think in, in the, in the initial modifications, I think we need to see what staff believes would best serve the city. One thing I would like to request, if you do do that, can we get it in a strikeout version, if possible, so we can actually see what the changes are? I, I mean, unless you're going to make wholesale changes.
Yeah.
I think they're going to be making wholesale changes.
I may as well wholesale change, but we can, again, we, we've discussed it amongst staff, but, you know, this is a pretty confusing ordinance.
It is, it is.
And I know that we need the different classes of, you know, class one, class two, class three, and, you know, I think we need to really simplify it so the community can take a look at this and understand what's required.
I really would like to have the community involved to some extent in the beginning to get the input rather than having to rewrite it, and I think it would be more accepted by the community if they had a part in it as well.
And, you know, staff can take a, a look at, you know, rewriting it, and then we can go to different community groups, like the Chamber and the Shop Local and things like that, that are out there, you know, that are putting on a lot of events, the other, you know, events in town and get, you know, their input, and we can, you know, get, you know, two council members, two Parks and Rec commissioners to, to do that with us.
I mean, last year wasn't, the last budget, Emily, wasn't there an estimate that we probably waived over $60,000 worth of fees? I mean, wasn't that the number that was thrown out? That special events, or that special events cost the city much as $60,000?
We did have a number in the PowerPoint that we presented at the workshop, but I don't think it was quite that large, maybe half of that.
I could be wrong.
I remember, I, I don't recall the number offhand, but I'm thinking...
That's the number that's fixed, but maybe that was wrong. Maybe it was 30 or 40. But it's still, I mean, that's what I don't think people understand, it's a substantial amount of money. I think, I'm sorry. I think, my, my personal thought would be first to get some kind of outline before we go out and ask everybody what they want about it, because everybody's not going to want to pay for anything, let's be real.
Well, yeah.
Can we start off with some kind of substantial working outline before we get the whole world out here to put their two cents worth in?
And I tend to agree with Kurt, you know, just want to, let's pare it down first before we start throwing everybody else into it.
Well, it also gives the reader then something to look at and talk about different issues, and for comparison purposes, if they want to go back to the original ordinance, they certainly can, but at least they've got what we're thinking about at that point. So, to me, it makes more sense and, and, you know, would be less time-consuming as well.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I just think that everybody has their own interests in mind, and we have a lot of, a lot of community groups, a lot of organizations that just expect the city to continue to waive fees, and they're going to, of course, you know, they're just looking out for their own fundraiser. I mean, if you can get the city to waive $500 here and $1,000 here and $2,000 here, that's just more money in your organization to do with what your organization does. And that's not to say that it's not a worthwhile thing, it's just to say it's the citizens and the taxpayers, you know, and we have a responsibility. The law enforcement, I mean, I think it's particularly when we continue to use the police, I mean, we put this burden on the police to shut these streets or to, to supervise these events, and we're not adequately ensuring that there is officers on duty, that there is enough security, even things just like the food truck and the alcohol being served at the food truck, and there's, we have no extra officers on duty. If something were to happen out there, it pulls our officers from doing their other duties. Every time we have one of these festivals, now some, some things hire private security, some don't. I totally agree with everything you're saying. I think we need to look into it, especially if they're big bucks fundraisers, I mean, come on.
I, I got to go here, Chief. These are not on-duty officers, correct? These are off-duty officers working the event, at least that's what I'm under the impression of.
Oh, in the last five months, they've been off-duty officers whenever we bring them, but that's only been the last couple of events. A lot of the events that are being discussed, it's on-duty officers, and so that is accurate, that if they're called away to something else, they'll be there instead of at the event.
So, we really are endangering what I consider to be public safety when we don't adequately ensure that these events are paying for themselves.
A lot of the staffing that we provide for the events are CAPS volunteers and our explorers, so they're not paid employees, so we do have to have paid employees there to manage the event, but a lot of the road closures are done by volunteers.
A lot of the dollars come from Parks and Rec, setting up and doing down and putting up the no street, no parking signs and all that, so you guys take a big hit of the dollar now.
Along with public...
Public work. Okay, along with public work. No offense to public...
It's working out, it looks like we have a public speaker.
I think we have our direction for you. Are you okay with that, of just bring it back simple, you know, bring it back the way...
Did you need to open this up?
Sheri Daly. Thank you, Sheri Daly, I live in the city of Galt, and I've participated in large and small fundraisers, and I would just suggest that there be some sort of sliding scale, perhaps like a 10% of your profit, so if the Boy Scouts hold an event and it's just to give away medals and merit badges and, and maybe do a little bit of fundraising, that they would pay 10%, so they make $500, they pay the city back 50, and then up to the actual cost of the event, so when you have these large events that do quite well, that they pay the taxpayers first. So, I think there's a way that we could do this without harming the original intent of the ordinance, which was to allow smaller fundraisers and small groups who might be risking everything just to put in the resources to have their event, but those who are making tremendous amounts of profit and not paying back to taxpayer, that really needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion with council?
No.
Seeing, do we have a direction for staff? The motion to accept staff's recommendation?
I, I move to accept the recommendation to come back with a more simplified motion. That's good, judges.
I'll second that.
I have a, a motion by Councilmember Powers, and a second by Councilmember Huer. If we have no further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Huer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
That's unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, calls from Recreation Department. Galt High School Biometric, Medical, and Engineering Teachers Best Academy 5K Fund Run.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Armando Solis, Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, I'll be presenting a staff report regarding the Best 5K Fund Run fee waiver request. In October of 2014, the city of Galt approved the inaugural Best Academy 5K Zombie Fund Run. City manager at the time authorized police to assist with traffic control with on-duty personnel at no cost to the academy in 2014 and 15. The Best Academy submitted a special events application for the 2016 Fund Run, and after reviewing the application, it was determined that the police department could not...
Could we shut off doors, please?
Could not adequately and safely provide traffic control for this event with only on-duty officers. The police department is requiring that an off-duty sergeant and an off-duty patrol officer be assigned to work with this event with six CAP volunteers who have already been assigned to the event at an estimated cost of $567. When presented with the cost reimbursement of $567, the Best Academy submitted a letter for your consideration requesting that the fee be waived by the city council. So, staff is asking you to consider the fee waiver request by the Best 5K Academy. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this point, but I do believe we have a representative from the Best Academy here.
We do. I actually have a speaker sheet as well. Melissa Newberger?
Good evening, councilmembers and guests. Well, after the last discussion, this is a difficult request to ask here, I'm going to give my best with my edits. So, my name is Melissa Newberger, and I'm the Best Booster Academy President. The academy is a rising star program amongst our Galt High Schools. We educate over 200 students in biomedical science, engineering, and technology, and we work very hard to provide them with 21st century skills and educational opportunities. Our students provide valuable services to the city of Galt. Every year, we participate in the Bird Festival, we participate in Extravaganza, our students have created plaques for your rose gardens, they helped redesign the Ton Memorial, they mentor elementary students for the robotics clubs throughout the elementary schools. What we really want to say is that an investment in education is really a, an investment in reducing delinquency, because we believe that that's part of what our mission is as a town. I want to thank you for considering our request to waive the traffic control fees, or perhaps this year allow us to staff it with adult crossing guards for the Best Academy 5K Fund Run planned for this October 22nd. This Best Academy fundraiser supports academy-related field trips, transportation for those students to mentor the robotics clubs at the Galt Elementary Schools, graduation stalls, and supplies for our... clubs at the Galt elementary schools, graduation stalls and supplies for our regional competitions. All of these costs are things that are encouraged that cannot be provided by grants. We are a very small booster club. We are a very new academy and we certainly don't have the wherewithal that some of the other booster clubs like SSA have. So we're really working hard to support our students. This is our one and only fundraiser and this is our third year of doing it. Our first year we had fifteen runners and believe me, it was quite a challenge to do an event in the rain. Last year we had thirty-five runners and we made a profit of six hundred and eighty-five dollars. If we were to pay the fees this year with the same amount of runners, we really wouldn't be able to sustain the funds that we need to do those extra services for the program. Our goal this year is to make this a community-wide experience where families, industry partners can learn about the academy and have fun. That was certainly a turning point for us last year. We had lots of kids. We had costume contests. We had this amazing five-year-old that ran that race and beat so many times of some of our even seasoned runners on our track team. It was just a shock. But the fact that so many children came and had so much fun that we're restructuring our event so that way if they're tenant under and they run with a paid adult, children can run free. So again, our intentions have certainly increased and blossomed to benefit the community. We have been very grateful, and make no mistake of it, of the support we received from the city council in the past years as we learned how to build this event. We're asking for it again this year with the hopes that our success can leverage us to pay fees in the future years. We're not asking that you waive our fees indefinitely, but this has been a very difficult learning experience for us. And as we are able to generate greater profits, we are certainly in a much greater capacity to meet your fee structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also comment, you'll have a question, but I know several times we've gone to the Best Academy and the engineering department and asked them to do things for us. And I know several years ago, we got a Safe Routes to School grant and most of it was based on the work that they did. They went out and surveyed the streets and they had someone come and teach a class on safe routes to school. So I just want to emphasize that it's usually a two-way street. I don't know how you, you would put the dollar value on any of that, but I know we feel sometimes our students are there at our beck and call and we ask them to do things for us and they usually respond and do so very well.
Well, I just want to say that until we kind of get this all sorted out, I can't say no to kids.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Ms. Newberger mentioned, was it crossing guards, as an alternative? I guess I'm trying to figure out, are we doing street closures here or is this just traffic assistance or what is it?
There are street closures. There are street closures. You have different runners at different paces and there's gonna be a lot of people out there. So for their safety, we're gonna have to close the street.
Do you guys have any explanation?
We don't close streets. We, but they do cross, uh-
No exceptions.
...in two different places. And so they will sometimes stop traffic against the traffic line.
Deborah, you need to come up.
We can't hear you, Deborah.
Well, we just heard her. I know.
The recording.
Uh-oh. For the TV people out there.
We don't close streets. We have a route that goes along with traffic, but there are two places on Lincoln Way. One is the Dollar General, right there at the corner. And we have a person there who directs the traffic, maybe against the light while the runners go through. And then at the other end where the freeway on-ramp is.
At the Alm Avenue.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deborah. Any further discussion with council? Seeing none, entertain the motion.
I move to approve.
I second and would also add that once we have the new ordinance and it's out there for the people, then they have some kind of warning as far as their own planning for their fundraising events.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Powers and a second by Vice Mayor Payne. Any further discussion?
A discussion. So Chief, you're recommending an off-duty sergeant, an off-duty officer and then six volunteers?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
For a total cost of five sixty-seven and it'll be absorbed in the police department's overtime budget?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Heuer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Senator Manos Lee?
All right, moving on to public works.
Mr. Clarkson?
Mayor, Council, Mark Clarkson, Utilities Manager and a few other titles here. We have a long agenda report for you. I started it at about twenty-five pages and I did cut it down a little bit. I did, I had to bring in two other helpers to have the presentation be short and swift. But there's a lot of information here. The project's been going on since two thousand and ten, you know, with a time schedule order that was given to us. And, and there's a lot of things happened from there to here, from there to here, this current, and we still have a lot of things still left to meet the time schedule order. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have John Griffin go ahead and give you a part of the presentation. He's with Coastline Engineering. And we'll take questions either along the way or afterwards.
Thanks, Mark. I won't repeat everything that's on the slide here, but this is the recommended action. That's all cited in our resolution for discussion tonight. And just a quick summary, this is regarding a new deep well at the industrial water treatment plant to replace an existing well. So a little background on our project. The driver for this project is the arsenic discharge limits in our wastewater permit. And the waste, the arsenic in our wastewater effluent originates from three of our water treatment plants. And knowing that we had to come up with a plan and a, an approach to attempt to resolve this issue, in two thousand fourteen, we looked at the sledge processing project. What could we do at the existing plants to remove the sledge? And through the two-year process, we identified that the cost both on it, one-time capital cost and ongoing operations cost were fairly costly. And we thought we had better ideas that would achieve the same goal, but at a lower capital cost and a lower operations cost. So putting all our heads together, we came up with kind of copying what we've done at Golden Heights, which is installing a deep well and that would eliminate the arsenic treatment at one of our sites. And so that's what we're recommending as our, as our alternative. So as Mark mentioned, we have a time schedule order. That order requires that we have our, our permanent reduction process online by September of two thousand eighteen. So a little more than two years. So recognizing that, we identified a couple of funding sources, state revolving fund, bonds and wastewater reserves. So jumping back to April, we presented our financing plan for the wastewater and how to resolve and identify paying for our loan, paying for this arsenic project. And that time it was identified to use the wastewater reserves. And the overall cost for that project, we identified at about four million dollars, some million dollars in savings and probably a hundred thousand dollars just a year in operations cost. Along with that, we, at the financing plan, we talked about initiating our wastewater cost of service study. And just want to let you know that's underway and we expect that sometime early next year we'll be presenting some ideas and recommendations and thoughts on, on our structure. So with that, that's, that's the background and the funding. I'm gonna turn it over to Alice and she'll talk about the project and some of the ideas from there.
Good evening. I will be going over the proposed project. The proposed project includes installing a twelve-inch test well to assess the water quality and the yield. So we'll be sampling three different zones. Following that, we will replace the existing well with the production well, which will have a capacity of about two thousand gallons per minute. Then we'll have to modify the water treatment plant because with, with the new well, we expect less arsenic. So there'll be modifications such as removing the arsenic treatment process. And then other components to the project include secret documentation and permitting with the county and the Division of Drinking Water. We also propose the demolition of the Quail Hollow site, keeping the hydro, the hydro tank and the well. The Quail Hollow site is currently offline because of the high arsenic levels. So we don't expect to use that for potable uses at all. So, and then depending on the, the site layout and the setback requirements by the Division of Drinking Water, we may have to acquire new land. So land acquisition is a part of the proposed project. The city issued a, an RSP to twenty-four firms. Four firms submitted a proposal. We interviewed, we interviewed two firms and we found that Wood Rogers was the most qualified and had the best understanding of the project. They actually have experienced an over twenty wells in this area. They designed the cost deep well and the Golden Heights deep well. Golden Heights doesn't require any arsenic treatment. So their scope proposes or includes the design, bid phase, support services, construction support services on everything that was discussed in the proposed project slide. Now I recommend that you resolve the following. Thank you.
Very good. Questions from council?
Yeah, on the, and I understand, you know, the, the project funding, I mean, we have an issue with arsenic that's produced in our wells and that's causing a permit problem at the wastewater treatment plant. Therefore, the treatment plant is being held responsible for the funding of the new deep water well. My question is, do we know what cost, is there a cost difference or is it even feasible to do any sort of treatment at the wastewater treatment plant specifically for arsenic?
Yes, during the initial phases of reviewing of the plant, we did, we actually brought in many proprietors with sledge treatment systems. You know, they bring them back on, or bring them in on forty-foot trailers and we ran several weeks of tests on the sledge and trying to get the arsenic removed. And we did see that was possible to do that. As we started looking at the facilities that we would need at, at the, at the wastewater treatment plant, sledge facilities, the cost was going to be into the seven, eight million dollars. We saw that really quick.
Okay.
These have to be some really large systems. And so then we, we took it to the next step to see that if we could treat the sledge before it came into the sewer lines. And that was our next phase going out at the, each individual water treatment plant site to see if we can capture that sledge. And as we got farther into design, it looked like that was gonna be the option. And we got into design, we, again, the sledge is really hard to pull that arsenic out and condense it and make it worthwhile. And the facilities were gonna be astronomical. So we looked at other alternatives there.
On the, on the, then also on the financing, so this is out of the, the SRF loan. Those are monies that were left over for the wastewater treatment plant. Were those the revenues that were left over from the wastewater treatment plant upgrade?
Well, this will be the reserves from the wastewater treatment plant fund. We had, we initially, we have a project, an SRF of twenty-six million dollars.
Right.
Before we went into getting the SRF, we had already started expending money. And back in April nineteenth, we were, the council approved us going into there and getting the, the money that we, we front-ended, front-loaded on the project. So that money will go back into the reserves and, and this project will, will use those reserves to build, to build a new well. That's what's being proposed.
Okay. And do you know offhand, it says you looked at alternative funding, you looked at the Water Enterprise Fund and Water Reserves. What do we have in Water Reserves and?
I believe it's around one million dollars right now in Water Reserves. I may be plus or minus a couple of hundred thousand.
Okay, okay. Okay.
One, one additional thing on the SRF, we contacted both the water SRF portion of the state and the wastewater SRF. The water SRF said they wouldn't fund it, even at an arsenic site on the treatment. Whereas the wastewater project SRF, they would fund any of the projects that we had proposed because they saw it was a wastewater project. That's why we, we started zeroing in on wastewater for the funding of this alternative.
And on the Quail Hollow well site, I understand you're taking, it is offline, but we're gonna plan on using that just for watering sites, truck, trucking the water out, is that it? To maintain it for some usability, is that it?
Yeah, we want to use it, because of the last drought, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, a request to use water to water medians and stuff like that.
Okay.
Non-potable. So we would look at this site, we would have to do some improvements to it, probably in the twenty to forty thousand dollar range, to make it non-potable water that if we had another, another major drought that we could use this site. Water trucks could pull up, grab the water and out they go. It's right in town. It's a terrific little site to have.
Well, also we have contractors that have to use water, so they would be buying permits to use the same water, wouldn't they?
Correct. We, we would be selling the water.
Right.
You know, to contractors. During the drought for two-year period, we offered our non-potable water well at the treatment plant site and they did come up there and get it. But we weren't having too much construction at that time.
Yeah.
But we, we were getting a couple dozen trucks a day at periods, way out of, way out of the city limits, you know, you know, to go up there and get it. But this would be a nice little thing to have in town.
How much does it cost to maintain that Quail Hollow well just to use it for potable water?
Well, right now it doesn't cost anything. It's rusting away and it's an eyesore. It's a neighborhood eyesore. But to maintain it as a, a potable well site, once you put a pump in the ground, it can just sit there for years. You know, it can just be ready to be used anytime. We can even, because it's not a drought situation, we can have the pump sitting on a shelf somewhere where it's not rusting. We just let it sit until it's needed in the future.
So you're not really gonna abandon that well. You're gonna keep it and you're gonna build another one, a deep?
Yeah, the Quail Hollow one is just removal of a tank and a few other things that are eyesores to the neighbors. And that we will never use that site as a water treatment site. And we, we put it in this thinking that it will help our sequo process. You know, we're showing the decommissioning of another arsenic plant and along with what we're doing at the industrial. But it also becomes a good neighbor. And then in the future, if we wanted to use that well, that well will stay there. We will monitor it. We will take readings from it, but we won't be using that well site for potable water. As far as the site that we have located, that's the industrial, water treatment plant site out in the industrial area. We have two tanks there. You may have seen them up against the railroad tracks. McFarland Road and the county's on the other side of the tracks and you can, you can see them as you go down there towards the live oak. And that's the site that we're looking at putting this, a deep well.
Any further questions from council?
You did make an accurate comment. It is an eyesore. Is there any chance that you're planning on putting the trees back that had to be taken out of that well site? Because it is, it is an eyesore there.
I'll have to talk to Parks about that. Yeah, the trees did have disease and-
Yeah.
And I recommended them to be removed.
Yeah. I think, well, we don't have, there isn't any choice. I mean, they changed the regulations on how much arsenic you can have in your water and they dropped it to a ridiculously low requirement. I mean, is it the discharge requirement almost the same as the drinking water level?
Absolutely the same.
Which makes absolutely no sense to me.
Right.
I don't think the fish would notice.
I haven't talked to a fish lately. I would tend to agree.
So, because that really is the issue, right?
Correct.
Once we remove the arsenic, we don't have anything to do with it. I mean, we can't get rid of it. I mean, isn't that part of the problem from my understanding is we can take the arsenic out of the water, then it goes into the wastewater and we've got to take it out of there?
Correct.
Yeah.
And we can't.
Then we can't discharge it to the creek.
Correct.
And we feel confident with the deep water well, that it's not going to, it's always going to provide what we need.
We have, we did a massive test on our existing deep well over the last 12 months, and we produced over 70% of our water with that deep well over a 12-month period, and the arsenic levels were so low, we were actually needing our discharge requirements at the wastewater treatment plant with the one well. We need the additional well because of summer months, where the peaks go up, and we have to bring on arsenic wells. Arsenic, I don't want anybody to know, we're not putting arsenic into the potable water
Naturally occurring.
We're taking it out of the naturally occurring water, and then we're giving it to wastewater.
Yes. And that's the problem, we can't discharge it from wastewater.
Do you foresee any problems in acquiring the necessary land to put the new deep well in?
We are going to try to make it fit on the existing site.
Oh, okay. It looked like maybe you were going to have to acquire some land.
Well, we wanted it to be a heads-up in case that happened.
Okay.
And we do have a couple of sites that we've looked at that are nearby, and, you know, we haven't contacted the owners yet, but it's, you know, this is the first phase as we go forward.
The ultimate goal being having at least three deep wells so that we don't have to worry about it anymore?
Absolutely, and it would help our future development, you know, with deep wells as they come online, you know.
Wood Rogers, were they the lowest bid, or did we just feel like they had the most qualifications or something?
When we're looking at design consultants, you know, professionals, you have to look at their abilities and their background and who, you know, the people, you can't look at, by state law, you can't look at their bid, you can't negotiate, you can't do it that way. So we have a sealed bid that they have, and then we look at qualifications, and they present everything. Wood Rogers, by the way, they're the ones who designed the well, not the Golden Heights plant, but they designed the well and the casings and everything involved in the first deep well that we have, which is a pretty good producer and good quality.
Well, it makes sense to use them again.
Yeah, they continued, they did this work for us about five years ago, and they continued doing that same type of work over the last several years with the people that would be working on our project, so they've amassed quite a bit of experience.
Okay. Any further questions from counsel or discussion? May I ask the city attorney, I can see we can have one motion for all of these as one? Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hewer and a second by Councilmember Campion. If there's no further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Communications. City clerk report.
Nothing to say.
Nothing. Full start over here, Emily?
I really don't have anything to say tonight, thank you very much.
Just a couple of quick development updates on the commercial front. You've probably seen them working out at Twin Cities Road and the Corrigan Corners Center, that's the Taco Bell and Squeeze-In under construction. We haven't received the permit for the ARCO, but we do have the shell permit in for Starbucks over at Twin Cities and East Stockton. That's, we can't really issue the shell until we get the site or the rest in, but that is reviewed and ready to go. And the Best Western Edition is about ready to be picked up. On the residential front, AB Homes is chomping at the bit, ready to go, they've got permit applications in. Elliott Homes in their second phase is essentially halfway built of their 128 units, or, you know, it's in some form of application process, and they're actually looking to move on to Phase Three. And then you've probably seen a couple homes being built on Mike Gutrich's Emerald Park.
Yep.
Residential going strong.
Mark?
I've requested enough and talked enough, thank you.
But you're always so entertaining.
Armando?
So I have a couple things. National Night Out was a huge success, so I just want to thank everyone that came out. And I believe that our numbers far exceeded last year, as I've been told, so great event. Tomorrow, tomorrow night at the Police Department, from 7:00 to 8:00, the Consumer and Fire Department is coming for our speaker series, and they're going to be doing a presentation on fire safety and water safety, emergency escape plans in the event of a disaster. So we want to thank them for coming out and doing our speaker series. And then lastly, today, I had the honor of promoting Mary Frances Tosano to the Wreckers Dispatch Supervisor position. It will take effect on Monday, so well deserved. She did extremely well in the process, and I also, we had another internal candidate, Sherry Hasso, she just did an amazing job. It was a very, very tough decision, but she taught a Mary, and I believe she'll do a great job for us.
Eugene?
Anything to add to this evening?
City council, we'll start down here with Kurt, anything?
This Thursday at the Gulf Chamber of Commerce, their speaker will be Jeff Spencer. He's the Executive Director for STA. And as you are aware, the Measure B is going to be put on the ballot in November. I think it will be a good presentation, answer a lot of questions people may have. At the same time, I was asked, and you don't have to give an answer tonight if you don't like, want to, they're looking, they have talked to all councils, as well as the Board of Supervisors to get endorsements. They'd like to put it on the webpage, and if councils amenable to that, they would add our names in that we voted, we had to vote to put it on the ballot, and it was a unanimous vote, so I told them I would bring that up to council, and unless you have an objection, would it be okay to use your name on the webpage endorsements?
I have no problem with it.
We're endorsing the opportunity to vote and decide whether they want to go for them.
Okay. And you're welcome to be at the Chamber, in case you have any questions.
That's Thursday, right?
Thursday at 11:30, Holy Raviole.
Yeah, National Night Out was great fun, all of us were there, and I think we had a great time, and it was very well-attended, and everybody did a great job on making it run smoothly. And I went to the ice cream social at the Ray House, and I actually had a really good time, had an ice cream spending on top of it all, and met some really nice new people, and had a really nice afternoon.
Awesome. All right.
No, thanks, just looking forward, I'll be there on Thursday.
Wanted to mention that the Real Life Church had a really nice event at Harvey Park. They had, Kohl's came and gave away backpacks to the students, they provided lunch, and they had a terrific speaker from the Rivercats, Harry Douglas, huge guy. Then also, I noticed that they participated, as well as some of the other churches, in National Night Out, in a huge way, if it met of you, for example, and I'm not sure if they were at Community Park as well. But anyway, again, demonstrating that they give back to the community.
Okay. Just a little bit of history here. Today is a very special day for the city, and the employees celebrated earlier today along with city council. In 1946, on August 16th, the city was a city, started out as a town of Galt, and was voted as the city of Galt, so this city is now 70 years old, from a population just a little under 1,000 at that time, to a population just a little over 25,000. So happy birthday, Galt. With that?
I'm going to go home with you.